Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to this regular called board meeting on September 9th, 10th, 2024 at 6:00 PM in the Estill County Board of Education boardroom located on 253 Main Street in Irving, Kentucky. At this time, I would like to call this meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone and I would like to ask these two young ladies in the front row to come forward and lead us with the pledge. You can bring your other two friends with you too. I'm sorry, I didn't notice them. Y'all come forward and lead us in the pledge.
I want to insist to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, infinite, just as we're all.
Thank you ladies very much. I'd like to remind everyone at the entrance way into the boardroom, there's a sign-in sheet if you'd like to sign in. Do we have any revisions to the agenda, Mr. Brough?
We do not.
Okay. First, on our agenda, we have recognitions and we have our middle school student presentations. So I'd like to ask Ms. Howcome and Ms. Barnett to come forward.
And while they're doing that, I would like to introduce our student representative who's joined us tonight from Estill County High School, Elizabeth Rader. She's the senior class president. I believe she was a governor scholar last year, also active at the ATC. So she'll be our representative this year and we're glad to have her, I think, banned also, if I remember correctly.
She's missing practice right now.
Welcome and we're glad to have you as part of our board.
We have started our clubs at the middle school this year and that's kind of what we did. Went ahead and asked our kids if they would come and kind of talk about their clubs and represent their organizations. So you could see some of them are in official dress tonight. Some of them are still, they've got their t-shirts ordered and they are ready to promote their club. So I'm going to go ahead and ask that we start with our STLP. They're thinking, oh, really, Ms. Howcome? But we'll start with our STLP and then we'll go to our FFA or FCCLA and then we'll end with our HOSA. But I kind of put these kiddos on the spot and told them a little bit late notice, but I really wanted to see who was interested and get them out here and really promote their club. So first of all, to all of you that showed up, thank you so much for taking on this leadership role and representing the middle school. We are extremely proud of you all and we are excited to see what you do this year with your clubs and I'm going to go ahead and let you all start.
Hi, my name is Hudson Hardy and uh, STLP is like, it's made by the Kentucky Department of Education Student Technology Leadership Program and it's a series of programs where students have to uh, work together and have different projects to like, uh, have different projects and overcome problems. They have to solve the problems and yeah.
My name is Logan McIntosh and STLP is Student Technology Leadership Program. STLP encourages students to learn coding and main for SaaS for each thing. Students create projects, pro- products or services to meet those in need and show their processes and show their process development. Some technical community service-based projects to digital content creation such as digital art, photography, design, programming, app development, robotics. robotics, network engineering, and wireless deployment. The best part of S. T. L. P. is the spring competition. The spring competition is an event with fourteen thousand or more participants. Finally, S. T. L. P. allows students to be challenged without realizing it. They can teach the students for engineering if they want to become engineers in the future. They will have to build, program, and code all things that we could use in the future. That is what S. T. L. P. is.
Before F. F. A. gets up here, I do want to thank Sarah Rose and Jeremy Simpson for, uh, working with these kids in S. T. L. P. This is something that the kids actually came to us and asked for. So this was student-led, student-generated, and we are so proud of these kiddos. And I'm excited that Mr. Cornet, Mr. Brock, and the board have worked with us and we're getting some labs, hopefully, from Paxton and Patterson here in the next little bit. That's going to allow us to do different things inside Mr. Dixon's classroom and really push the S. T. L. P. program. F. F. A., are you ready? We have four students, uh, who are at a regional meeting right now with Ms. Lynn Miller. So there are four students who are representing Estill County Middle School at the regional meeting. And then we have three students here tonight with us representing for you all.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Alexander. I'm a sixth grader. I take in, oh, um, I'm a sixth grader. I take Ag class in Estill County Middle School. I'm excited for all the opportunities that Ag and F. F. A. will provide me. One opportunity, S. A. E. or supervised Ag experience program provides is a chance to use what I learned in Ag class at home with my projects. At home, we have a big garden, bees, sheep, goats, raised sorghum and cornmeal. Ag class and F. F. A. will give me a good start on my project in life through grants and contests to help me succeed.
Agriculture programs are based on three main components, the Ag classroom, F. F. A. and S. A. E. We would like to share some basic information about each of these and our theme for the year. This year, we have chosen the theme, Breaking New Ground, for our chapter. Just as a farmer breaks sod on a new field with a vision of fertile soil and boundless crops. We are starting off with a great amount of enthusiasm to tap into the great potential of our middle school students.
My name is Elijah Friend and I'm a sixth grader in the agriculture program. In agriculture classes, we gain knowledge about agriculture and have planned several lab activities. We are participating in the Discover Dairy Adopt a Cow program this year with our classes. Where we get to adopt our own dairy calf and follow it throughout the year. We also will be participating in the Kentucky Farm to School Challenge in October. Where we, where we complete three challenges to taste, learn, and grow in agriculture. Ms. Miller will also help us apply for Better Ways Through Better Days grant to get funds to build a chicken coop so we can hatch some chickens and start our own flock for fresh eggs to use in our school. Agriculture allows us to not only learn in the classroom, but do hands-on activities and apply what, what we learned.
Evening. I'm Cole Riddle. I'm a sixth grader in agriculture and F. F. A. As a, as the second component of the Ag program, F. F. A. at the middle school will start members on their path in the organization, allowing us to get our Discovery F. F. A. degree by the eighth grade. Members can serve on committees to plan and organize events and serve in leadership roles as chapter officers. F. F. A. allows us to learn teamwork, participate in community service, public speaking, and parliament, practice parliamentary procedures in conducting the business of our organization. This year, we applied for and were selected to receive an F. F. A. Rising Sun Grant, which is to help new chapters purchase basic supplies. We have also completed our application for our F. F. A. chapter charter as Estill Middle F. F. A. and we will be recognized at the state F. F. A. convention this June to officially receive our national chapter charter. At the chapter level, F. F. A. does have some middle school con- test able for members. There are com- competitive events in public speaking, parliamentary procedures, and a few others which are orientations of the traditional high school contests. To get members move more involved and better prepared, we will be cooperating with other groups for additional opportunities such as soil con- convention, district essay contests, the Department of Agriculture for age and others.
I forgot to mention that every club that we have here tonight, they have at least over fifty members in each of their clubs. Um, every kid at the middle school has signed up in, to a club. So if a student, um, these are after-school clubs as well, but every student will have club date twice a month and every kid is involved in something. But these clubs, like I said, have over fifty members already. F. C. C. L. A., Ms. Wilson?
F. F. A. is Ms. Miller, right?
Yes.
Also want to note that whenever their grant goes through and they get official, um, charter membership, that they get their own jacket.
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Harper Rader and I'm in the seventh grade.
My name is Tim Lee Flynn and I'm in the seventh grade.
Hi, my name is Kalia Manus and I'm in sixth grade.
My name is Anissa Bingham and I'm in the seventh grade.
I'm excited to tell you about something new and amazing happening at our middle school, our very own F. C. C. L. A. chapter. F. C. C. L. A. stands for Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America. It's a unique organization and that helps students develop important life skills, becoming leader, become leaders and make a positive impact in our communities. What makes F. C. C. L. A. really special is that it's the only club focused entirely around family, career, and community. It's all about helping us understand and appreciate our roles within our families and society and preparing us for the future.
Our first F. C. C. L. A. meeting at the middle school was last Friday and we had an amazing turnout with fifty-six students in attendance. So many of our classmates are, classmates are excited to be a part of this new venture. Our national F. C. C. L. A. theme for this year is Dare to Dream. We've already started planning some exciting activities.
Next month, we are working with the school's library to participate in Digital Sistership Week. This is a great chance for us to learn and teach others about being safe and respectful online. This is an important topic and we are looking forward to getting involved. Ten of our F. C. C. L. A. members will be attending the Region Fifteen meeting at Eastern Kentucky University next weekend. This event is a big deal because we look to meet other F. C. C. L. A. members from around the regi- region. Learn more about the organization and bring back ideas to grow our chapter.
We have some students who are excited about participating in Star's event this year. Star stands for Students Taking Action With Recognition. And it's a chance for us to showcase our skills and achievements in various areas. It's an excellent way to challenge ourselves and be recognized for our hard work. We're excited about these opportunities. Thank you for the opportunity we sh- to share some information about our brand new chapter. We are looking forward to sharing more about our journey as the year goes on.
H. O. S. A. Are you ready? I'm not gonna lie, I'm getting a little teary-eyed. They've made me very proud.
Good afternoon. My name is Allison Gould and I am ECMS H. O. S. A. Secretary. The, the other members here with me today are Jameson Powell and Colin Collins.
We are excited to open a new chapter of H. O. S. A. for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. We all have lots of exciting things planned for this year and cannot wait to give back to the community through service and leadership.
This year, we plan on competing in H. O. S. A. regional competition December thirteenth and day. This competition is a qualifier for state competition in March. We are working hard to bring H. O. S. A. gold to ECMS's school.
Although we are all new to H. O. S. A. and healthcare content in general, our chapter has been working together for Suicide Prevention Week. We have stayed after school the last two Fridays to decorate the halls with posters promoting suicide prevention and making ribbons for teachers to wear throughout the week.
We believe that talking about suicide prevention can lower suicide rates in Estill County schools.
Studies show that talking about suicide prevention in school lowers the, the risk of students going through extreme.
Our H. O. S. A. mission for this week was to let each student know they matter and they are cared about.
ECMS hopes, H. O. S. A. hopes to do more projects like this in the fi- school year and show that all aspects of healthcare matter. Thank you for your time.
If anyone needs to leave at this time, you're welcome to leave. We'll move forward with the business portion of our meeting.
You're also welcome to stay.
You're also welcome to stay.
I love the jackets. That's so awesome. So, Ms. Miller was talking this evening and she was like, do you have any jackets? And somebody went, oh, no, I don't even wear jackets. I just gave them to them. So that's what she should have been.
Why Teacher of the Visually Impaired T. V. I. Position?
Uh, so Ms. Brown and I had spoken, uh, last week and then I think maybe earlier this week as well, uh, about this position. Uh, the need has arisen for a visually impaired teacher in our school district. So we need to create a position and post and then we'll be looking for someone to fill that to support or student. It's my recommendation we do it.
I need a motion for approval of a T. V. I. position. Sheila Samples makes a motion. Uh, Mr. Joe Crawford makes a second. Do we have any discussion? If not, I'd like to call for a vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, next on our agenda, we have consideration for approval of a couple of out-of-state trips. Uh, Mr. Brock, would you like to talk about those?
Sure, uh, real briefly, I'll talk about them. We got the National Student Council Leadership Conference, which is Mr. Flynn's group that goes every year. Uh, we've got a twenty twenty-five New York City senior trip where this year seniors would be going to New York City. And then we have F. F. A. for the high school conditioning for a trip to the national convention. Uh, I'm not sure, Mr. Yost, do you know when the last time Estill County went to a national F. F. A. convention was? So, but they're, they're looking to go to a national convention. So it's my recommendation we approve these trips for the student council, for seniors, and for high school F. F. A.
Um, I need a motion, um, to, for approval. Sheila Samples makes a motion. Here, uh, Tammy Hardy makes a second. Do we have any discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed?
I will say, can I come so I can watch Wicked?
I already told Asti, I said I'll be a chaperone.
I'll be a chaperone.
Next, we have consideration for approval of the following MOAs. Um, would you like to talk about the M. O. A. for Trinity Health Group?
Sure. Uh, this is just a agreement with the Trinity Health Group, which provides students for our services, uh, excuse me, services for students and, uh, counseling.
So I need a motion for approval. Tammy Hardy makes a motion. Joe Crawford makes a second. Do we have any discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with a five oh vote. Next, we have consideration for approval of federal statement of district assurances.
Uh, each year, we have to, uh, approve a federal statement for district assurances, which is tied to the funding that we will provide for education within our district each year. So it's my recommendation we approve.
I need a motion for approval of the federal statement of district assurances. Tammy Hardy makes a motion. Sheila Samples makes a second. Do we have any discussion? If not, I'd like to call for a vote. All in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries with a five oh vote. I'm moving through these really fast. Next, we have consideration for approval of amended salary schedule.
So as it, uh, everybody knows, this year we have, uh, started our, our own police department again. So this is, uh, the amendment goes directly in relation to the S. R. O. salaries. We had a, uh, starting salary and we had a salary for a chief, but we had not, uh, done experience throughout the years for that salary yet. So like if one year, two year, three year, all the way up to, like we do for teachers, uh, we just took and amended and we've added those years of experience and what the pay would be throughout the continuum, just like it is for teachers.
So with that being said, I need a motion for approval. It looks like Joe Crawford and Sheila Samples makes a second. Do we have any discussion? If not, I'd like to call for a vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with a five oh vote. Next, on our agenda, we have consideration for approval of the revised A. R. C. chairperson or C. C. D. S. D. representatives.
Yeah, so each year, we, the board has to approve who can chair A. R. Cs in the district. We've revised that list a little bit and that's why it's before you tonight. It's my recommendation we approve.
Um, I need a motion for approval. Sheila Samples makes a motion. Carrie Smallwood makes a second. Do we have any discussion? If not, I'd like to call for a vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have consideration for approval of a request for a proposal in search of a construction management in relation to planning for a new middle school and other potential projects for the Estill County School District.
So this, yeah, this goes along with our R. F. P. that we put out for an architecture firm, uh, special call board meeting last month. Uh, we will be looking for a construction management as well. We did, uh, secure from S. F. C. C. the five million dollars and I think it hit our account today, Angie, or yesterday one. Okay, so we do have, we do have the funding for that. Uh, we are looking forward to move forward with the sign and site prep. So we need to put out a R. F. P. for a construction management company. It's my recommendation we approve.
Um, with that being said, I'd like to call for a motion for approval. Sheila Samples makes a motion. Do I have a second? Was that a yes, Joe, or Tam? Okay, Tammy Hardy makes a second. Do we have any discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, all of you have before you the working budget for F. Y. twenty-five. On our agenda now is consideration for approval of that budget. Mr. Brock, would you like to add anything to that?
Yeah, I mean, it, this is the working budget. We'll come back in October. I know we made some moves with indirect cost today, so it will change a little bit. This is just the preliminary. It's my recommendation we approve.
Need a motion for approval. Uh, Tammy Hardy makes a motion. Sheila Samples makes a second. Do we have any discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have consideration for approval of shortened days. Mr. Brock, would you like to explain that?
So anytime we have a, a student that it's determined that they could benefit, uh, of a shortened school day, the board has to approve that before that can go into effect. Uh, obviously, we have some students that that's been the determination. It's brought before the board to approve that shortened school day. It's my recommendation we approve.
I need a motion for approval of shortened school day. Joe Crawford makes a motion. Sheila Samples makes a second. Do we have any discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? I think everybody's in favor of a shortened school day. Uh, next, we have consideration for approval of final school allocations for the high schools. Uh, next, we have consideration for approval of final school allocations for the high school and middle school, Estill Springs and West.
So this is allocation, uh, we take it to them early in the spring and then we have to give them finalized version. Uh, based on enrollment, it's a strict, uh, per student, teacher, uh, the number of students and then the teacher allocation, uh, directly tied to their, uh, section six monies and also the budget that the SBDM will have for the year. We did have a little bit of movement this year because our enrollment is up, uh, from what it was back in the spring. So this, there was some adjustments on those. They are attached and, uh, I would like for, uh, approval of the final allocation.
I need a motion for approval of the final school allocations for high school, middle school, Estill Springs, and West Urban. Sheila Samples makes a motion. Carrie, Carrie Smallwood makes a second. Do we have any discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have our consent items. Mr. Brock, would you like to discuss those?
So we got the min, uh, just the minutes from the August fifteenth and then the special call went on the twenty-ninth where we put out the RFP and also, uh, petition or approved petition in SFCC for the money for the middle school. We've got the treasurer's report so that we can continue to function and pay bills. And the, uh, approve of a middle school fundraiser, which you have also in front of you and it's for, uh, trips for, uh, is it choir, I believe? Uh, the fundraisers for choir. So, uh, it's my recommendation that we approve the consent items.
I need a motion for approval of the consent items as discussed. Tammy Hardy makes a motion. Joe Crawford makes a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, that brings us down to the superintendent's report. Mr. Brock, give us an update.
Okay, so we've had a good start to the school year. Uh, very pleased to say once again that we did, uh, get the five million dollars from SFCC for emergency funding to start planning of a new middle school. Uh, I will address that real quick. Uh, we did put out an RFP for an architect that ends on the twenty-fifth. And then we will, uh, probably do some interviews and the board will make a decision on that. Tonight, obviously, you've approved for construction management. We'll put out a RFP for that. We'll run that for two weeks as well and then we'll make a decision there. Uh, structural engineers do continue to monitor the middle school. We do continue to give tours to legislators and representatives, uh, to try to continue to secure funding for that. Uh, that's where the students are and that's where they will remain for the time being. The ultimate goal is to get them out of there at some point, but as long as it's safe, uh, that is where we will leave, leave them and we will continue to monitor it to make sure that it is safe. Uh, as far as attendance goes, we're sitting right now at ninety-three point three percent for the district. I did say enrollment was up from last year and it is. We're sitting at two thousand and ninety-nine kids right now. It's about forty-three kids more than there was at this time last year. Uh, so that is, uh, a good thing for us as a district that we are growing. And then I have some information for you. I want to say this is strictly for, uh, information purposes. Uh, we don't want to influence anybody either ways, but I do want to give the community and the people that's here tonight some information on the upcoming amendment two, which will be on the ballot this fall. Uh, we all aware that there are as an amendment to the constitution on the ballot this fall. Uh, there's two, an amendment two will appear on your ballot and it is tied to schools and funding. And, uh, it, it will read as follows. "To give parents choice and educational opportunities for their children, are you in favor of enabling the General Assembly to provide financial support for the educational cost of students in kindergarten through twelfth grade who are outside the system of common public schools by amending the Constitution of the Kentucky stated below? The General Assembly may provide financial support for the education of students outside the system of common schools. The General Assembly may exercise the authority by law, sections fifty-nine, sixty, one seventy-one, one eighty-three, one eighty-four, one eighty-six, and one eighty-nine of this Constitution notwithstanding." Again, this is for information. I want to kind of give you an idea of what that means. The part that says enabling the General Assembly means that it's giving laws, lawmakers a broad new authority, which they previously did not have. For financial support, which means public tax dollars. Outside of the school system means for private schools, religious schools, or other non-public education providers not subject to the same oversight accountability rules or transparency as public schools. Notwithstanding means that in, this is an exception to, uh, regardless of what the constitution says. So, again, this would give the right for public tax dollars to fund private schools, religious schools, or schools outside of the, uh, public sector. Uh, the exceptions, uh, if created by amendment two, uh, the allowed public tax dollars to pay for private education, amendment two, uh, proposes to create exceptions for seven different sections in the Kentucky Constitution. And this is a summary of those ex, exceptions that it would make. Uh, it would prohibit legislature from passing laws targeting specific areas of the state. So right now, they can't pass a law to target specific areas of the state. This would do away with that. It would also do away with them being prohibited, uh, prohibiting legislature to indirect, uh, enactment of laws targeting areas of the state. Uh, so, not only could they pass, but they could, uh, indirect, uh, laws, uh, enact laws that would target specific areas. Uh, it would, uh, bypass the requirement that taxes can only be collected for public purposes and allow it to be used for, taxes to be used for private purposes. Uh, legislature currently is responsible for enabling efficient system of public schools. This would be a way around, uh, working that. Uh, common school fund prohibits taxation of funding for non-public schools. So currently, tax money cannot be spent on non-public schools. If this passes, tax money, uh, the tax money from the state could be spent on schools that are not public schools. Education funding exclusively to be used to maintain state public schools. If this passes, uh, tax money could be used to maintain other schools that are not public, such as private and religious. Uh, prohibits public education funds from being used for religious schools. And again, uh, if this passes, then public, uh, tax funds could be used for religious schools. So again, that's for, uh, informational purposes only. Feel it important for us to bring this information to our community and also to the people here tonight. In no way are we trying to attempt to tell you which way you need to vote. Uh, we just wanted to bring the information to you. And that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brock. Um, next on our agenda is our principal's report and we'd like to start with Ms. Hall.
I got it.
So the first thing up there is enrollment. We still have sixteen early head start students. That's the maximum that we're allowed to have. We have two classrooms of eight. For preschool and head start program, we have a hundred thirty-seven students. Our attendance for the last month is ninety point two-two percent. And then in that last column, I put a few things that have either already happened or going to happen. So this next week, we have touch a truck family night. We also have two family events on Thursday this week. We have toddler time and that is hosted for any children zero to five that are not in school. So that is on Friday. And then the next Friday, we have Family Friday, which is a partnership with KET. We haven't done that before. That's new this year because our building is available on Fridays. That gives our families a chance to come in. They, um, do a class with their kids, then they eat a meal with their kids, separate, and we teach the kids. And then our counselor also works with, um, the families. So the focus of that is social emotional. And we have a representative with K, from KET to help us with that for the first time. And then so far, we've completed a hundred fourteen home visits. At the bottom, I put that we are learning about pets. We teach our standards through units, which is, um, we are in contract to use something called creative curriculum, which is units and we're in our pet swing. So you can tell in that last picture, that's a picture of one of our preschool classrooms. We transform our rooms to represent these, these units. So that's a classroom that's set up like the Wake Goat Animal Clinic. And I just put that picture of that exhausted child. She's actually on the bus.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Lots of good things going on at South Urban. Um, is Ms. Flynn, or Ms. Moore, Ms. Flynn Moore?
We have pretty quiet.
Thank you.
Alright, so I am the principal of the Success Academy and I'm just gonna share a few things that are going on at the Success Academy with you. The first thing we have is Mr. William Mullins, a senior at the high school, is coming in as part of his gifted and talented program. And he is working with our students every Friday on their performing arts curriculum. So they have gotten guitar lessons from Mr. William three or four times now and all of my kids love it. It is super successful. And he's having a great time. They're having a great time. So it's been awesome to get to watch our kids learn something new and to also see William thrive in his leadership role there. Um, the next part is our emergency bags that we gave to every school in the district. My kids were able to kind of load those bags up and then send them out to everybody in the district. And they actually got to go and deliver them to classrooms, which they really enjoyed and loved doing. And then after that, Mr. Cornet treated them to Backstreet Grub. And of the six kids that we had, four of those kids had never been to Backstreet Grub before. So it was really cool to get to see them experience something new there as well. Um, the other part on the corner is Ms. Sutter and Ms. Barnett came to Success Academy and did a fall painting with our students. And we try to keep our students connected with the high school and middle school as much as possible since our goal is to get them to go back to those schools. And Ms. Sutter does a really awesome job at getting some kind of a craft for our students to be able to do. And she got Ms. Barnett involved in this one and they all loved it. And they had options of different paintings to draw and Ms. Barnett helped them if they needed help. So it was just a really neat thing to watch. And then the last picture is Mr. Chris Gordon. He is one of our students and he's working on his Apex there. Our students have weekly goals that they have to meet in their Apex classes or iReady classes. And so far, our students are doing an awesome job at hitting those goals. So we're super proud of that. That is the Success Academy.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Next, we have Ms. Howson from the middle school.
We have quite a bit of information, but we're gonna try to go through this fairly quickly. Um, we've got some really great things going on in our school this year. Um, Kenley is so excited to help out every board meeting. But, um, so we got a pamphlet for your brochure of what we presented at the regional board meeting the other day. And then, of course, we copied our PowerPoint for you. As you can see and I've heard, we've started our clubs at ECMS. We have everything from FFA to root club, to recreational basketball, to a pep club. We are really trying to, uh, bring about school spirit into our school. We're so excited that the high school has, um, extended their, uh, invitation for us to do, uh, Paint the Town Blue. We're excited to, uh, be a part of Homecoming Week. So we are hoping to really up our school spirit at the middle school. Um, some things that have been going on at ECMS, I'm not gonna read all of those to you. But we have a teacher staff section and the student section. Um, lots of Ewoks, peer assessment. Um, our coaches, Andrea Banks and Sarah Beard are phenomenal. And they have been going around with our teachers and they have been peer assessing. They've been, uh, having meetings with them to individualize their growth plans and really focus on what they need to help them grow and be successful in the classroom. Um, another thing, our encouragement of the heart table, we are really wanting to promote servant leadership in our school and model that for our students. Our encouragement of the heart table is something, um, that I'm super proud of and very appreciative of Mr. Brock and Mr. Cornet for bringing this to us. Um, I'm all about, it's better to give than to receive and to watch our teachers lift each other up and focus on everybody's social emotional needs is just amazing. Um, our students, uh, if you've not seen them going around and taking more pride in the school by picking up for those extra five dollar e-bucks that they're getting or helping out a friend and trying to get those e-bucks to spend them in the whistle stop, it's amazing. And we've gotten to the point now where they don't even want the extra five dollars. They're just doing it because that's what's expected out of them is to help out and take pride in our building and in our school. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and let Ms. Barnett talk about the iReady data. I asked her to come here tonight, so I will let her talk about, uh, the iReady data and.
Um, so I'm really excited to be here and I'm excited to be part of the middle school. Um, it has been really heart lifting to me to be able to be with those kiddos every day. And it is fun because they give a little bit more hugs than the high school students do. I get more high fives and fist bumps than I did at the high school. Um, so first of all, you can see that we put our proficient and distinguished and we combine those because that's what we're kind of looking at to start off. Um, and you can see that we have a lot of room to grow. But also, um, we are doing things with this data that is encouraging our students to want to grow. So our teachers are constantly using this data in their classroom. They have been doing iReady, um, lessons with their kids. They have, um, we did a goal setting in our advisory class where the kids actually got, um, their iReady scores. It showed them what it meant to have a stretch growth, to have that typical growth. And they set goals on where they were doing really well and areas of concern or areas that they know that they can grow in. And it was really exciting to see those kids see where they are and where they want to be by the end of the year. Um, also with those, those were sent home to the families. And it showed specific, in the specific areas, it showed them ways that they could work as a family to help your stu, their student or our students, everybody's students, to improve in those areas. So I thought that that was a really good thing because sometimes as parents, you know, we're all parents, um, most of us, we, um, don't know always what we need to do to help them. And so that was something that we used too. Um, we also use the iReady data to create our intervention, MS, MTSS intervention groups that our teachers in math and reading have those groups that they get to pull in, um, and work with them individually in smaller settings. Um, so that they can improve them where they are right now and use, and build those skills to get them to where we want them to be and show that growth. Um, so.
I want to thank, uh, the elementary schools and the high school. They have allowed us to work with their coaches. Meredith has been a huge help in helping us get simple solutions up and running. Tanya Ford has been amazing with sharing her reading intervention strategies so that we can hit those, uh, students who really need those interventions early on. Uh, Ms. Brock has been very helpful in helping us get the science and social studies diagnostics up and running. So I will just have to brag on the entire district, on the coaches, because they are working together. They are, uh, they are working together. They're planning together. They're making sure that they're hitting every single kid in our district. And it's really starting to show in our students and their growth. So thank you all for allowing us to steal them a couple of days and work with us. I appreciate it. Um, we have a list of next steps. Again, I'm not gonna go through all of those. Um, like I said, we've got MTSS groups. We've got our grade level meetings. We are really trying to be intentional and consistent this year and really focusing on the things that we need in order to get our students to grow. Um, science and social studies is the first time that I know of that we've had diagnostic tests. Um, and we've already seen twenty or more points due to the direct instruction based upon the needs of those students in those tests. Again, we have phenomenal coaches who are doing a tremendous job out at the middle school and really working with our teachers. And it's very exciting to see the students engaged and how far we are growing each and every week. Um, I'm so excited for you all to meet our counselor. She couldn't make it out tonight, but if you've not met our counselor, Brandy Cottle, I really encourage you to come out and meet with her and talk with her. She is phenomenal. She is a team player. She is so encouraging to all of us out at the middle school. She started doing lunch bunches with our students. She started, um, having one-on-one sessions with our students. We've, uh, talked with every student in the sixth grade so far and they have all picked a trusted adult that they have in the middle school. And she's gonna meet with all four hundred and twenty-five of our students to make sure that they have a connection with at least one adult in that building that they can go to. So she has put some of her goals on there. Um, I encourage you all to come out and meet with her and talk with her. She's doing a great job. And then on the end there, we just have some of our upcoming events, um, in September and October. Again, I encourage you all, I thank the high school for allowing us to be part of Homecoming Week. And we're excited to go out and tailgate with them and be a part of that week and really show pride in our school district.
Thank you, middle school. Mr. Yost from the high school.
Well, I think I'll segue right in from what Ms. Halcom said. I want to start off by saying, I've been so thankful for the collaboration with Mrs. Brock and Ms. Beard and Ms. Andrea Banks, and then coaches at the elementary school with Meredith and on down the line. It's, it's been so refreshing to see the collaboration, how it's impacting our district this year. Mrs. Brock has been such a tremendous asset, bringing back, you know, we do our Ewoks and our walkthroughs, but adding the layer of the administration and instructional coach observations, where for the next two weeks, we're meeting with teachers and focusing on the depth of the questioning, as well as instructional rigor. And head nod to Sarah Beard, I shouldn't hear anymore, but Sarah Beard, working with Ms. Brock, they came up with the idea of, we're taking teachers on these walkthroughs and letting them actually script what questions they're seeing, and then when we get together as a staff, they'll be able to really get a picture of, this is from the teacher's perspective. This is what you all said you saw, so where do we need to grow, and where do we need to improve? So it's, it's been such a wonderful collaborative process this year, and just a level that I've not seen before in this district. So it's, it's really impressive to see. Something that we did a couple of weeks ago now, it's been a couple of weeks, and I never dreamed it would take off like it did. I know Mr. Brock's got a thousand phone calls about it, at least, and Ms. Vicki Puckett, but our cafeteria staff are killing it this year. I've gotta give Becky and her whole crew a big shout out, and Ms. Vicki for letting them have some freedom and flexibility to be able to do some new things, but that post with the circutary box, it's got over 2,100 interactions, 324 shares, and I never dreamed that a circutary board picture on a high school Facebook page would get as much attention as it has. But it has been such, such a fun, such a fun opportunity to watch students actually interact, and they're giving feedback and saying, we'd like to see this for lunch. So now they're adding things like chicken and waffles next month. They're gonna add some other new items that kids are saying, we'd love to see this. So just some new things in letting the kids have a voice. At the end of the year last year, they did a bracket-style competition of favorite breakfasts and favorite lunches, and they're using that to really help respond to what kids are wanting to see. So I want to give them a shout out. I know they, they're a group that doesn't always get the praise that they deserve, and they keep us fed every day, so we love them.
I got screenshots of that Facebook post from across the state in text message, and people saying, you all are doing a great job. The farthest was Paducah, probably the farthest one I've got, but I've got about 15 in text message, so.
I've got a cousin that works for the school district down in Texas, and she was like, I have taken this to my food service director. And apparently, they're starting it next month, so it's, uh, it's taken off like wildfire. Ms. Halcom's alluded to this already, but Homecoming Week next week. I gave you all two sheets from me today. I've got the flyer, then I've also got the Homecoming theme, uh, themes for the week, as well as the Paint the Town Blue reminder. If you want to dress up with us next week, you're more than welcome to. Come out to the high school, you take pictures with the kids dressed up in your, you know, pajamas or your dynamic duo. I think, you know, we can have, me and Joe Crawford will, you know, do a dynamic duo day next week.
We're already doing it.
Exactly, perfect. But it's gonna be, it's gonna be a great week. One of my favorite weeks for school spirit next week, so I'm looking forward to it. We'll also have the Second Annual Engineer Walk on Friday night before the football game. We'll meet at the bus garage at 6:30. We'll do shuttles like last year from the high school for those who can't make it up to the bus garage, but we will have the Second Annual Engineer Walk. 6:30 will start, and we'll walk down from the bus garage to Hoover Neese Field for the Homecoming football game against Lawrence County. I want to recognize a few groups as well. Girl soccer will be in the state Class 2A Final Four this Saturday down in Owensboro, taking on Christian Academy of Louisville. They've had a tremendous season so far, and I'm looking forward to them performing in the Class 2A State Semifinals. Marching Engineers have been grand champions in their first two competitions, including Mr. Bowles telling me they beat Madison Central in a competition for the first time ever, I do believe, so pretty awesome. They're having a great start to the year. And then Mason Isaacs, we got this news just today. This is hot off the presses. I'll have a Facebook post tomorrow about it. He was named a committed scholar for the National Merit Scholarship Competition, which means he was in the top 50,000, which are well over a million seniors in the United States. So that means he's top 5% in the country on the National Merit Competition on the PSAT. So really proud of Mason and the job he's done. Couple other things, just really briefly. I want to thank Maggie Kessler. She's one of our teachers at the high school. She's really taken the lead this year on the Homecoming events, from the parade on Thursday to the walkout for candidates on Wednesday, and, you know, Homecoming Queen being crowned on Friday night. She's taken the lead on a lot of this this year, and I want to give her a big shout out. We're tracking data day in and day out. In addition to our coaching this year, we're getting back into PLCs this year. We had our math PLC today. And the rich conversation that they had after school, talking about their assessment data, and what steps they needed to take to make sure that students were meeting those power standards and gaining mastery. It was really wonderful to see them diving into the data and really owning it and saying, this is the steps we have to take. So our class of 2025, they're already over 10% ahead of where last year's group was at this point. Over 77% of the class is already post-secondary ready, and those numbers will just continue to grow as we get more industry certs and coyote test things throughout the year, and the ACT on October 1st. So it, it's a really exciting time at Estill County High School. I'm so proud of our students and our staff and the hard work that they're doing day in and day out, and thank you all for your continued support.
Thank you, Mr. Yost. I think next we have Ms. Miller, is that right?
Sorry, I'm really bad with the microphones. It's been a great month at West Urban. We had our first Grandparents' Day Parade, and I have to give a huge shout out to our Estill Springs family, because they kind of guided us through it where it was our first one. It was probably my favorite event ever. I left with my cheeks hurting, so that meant I smiled too much, probably. We also had High Attendance Day, and although we were not the highest in attendance, we did have 11 classes with perfect attendance, which means I was dunked in the dunk tank about 22 times, and it was traumatizing, just so everyone knows. We had our first PBIS reward. So our students were working for their good behavior. They got extra recess outside. Every student earned extra recess of some type. It was just about how much they earned depending on the behavioral points that they had been awarded for the month. We have also started reading mastery in both kindergarten and first grade so that we can make sure that our students are getting off to a great start and have a strong foundation in literacy. We've had a great staff professional development related to iReady. We were able to partner with Estill Springs, and our staff was able to work with them and have this together, and we've had a really good time with that. We also had some release days for our ELA teachers. So Springs and West Urban teachers got together, and they worked on the curriculum so that we could make sure we are providing a strong foundation across the board for our Estill County students. And finally, we have had a lot of teaching and a lot of learning and a lot of fun this last month. So I'm looking forward to seeing what the next month brings for us.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Next, we have Ms. Mullins from Estill Springs.
Good evening. Ms. O'Brien will pass out a handout for me, but I just want to say, if I could wrap up what the month of September, I guess, through the end of August, when Brooke and I sat down to really talk about what are some things we want to share, there are highlighted events, and that's what's on this paper, but it really has been about learning, leading, and loving. And to me, when those three can come together, then it makes for a great day at school. And I know that if a child leaves fifth grade and doesn't love school, it's really hard to create that love of learning past elementary school. We have to really set the foundation for what school is about, school being a safe place, a safe place where they can learn, express themselves, and be loved. So a lot of what Ms. Miller and I are sharing is similar, because we do have a lot of initiatives that we are leading together, which has been a great way for us to share the load of training, resources, and our staff has been able to grow together. You'll notice we have reading mastery started in kindergarten. Reading mastery is, I will give an example of how effective I believe it has been. Ms. Lena Marshall, who is a kindergarten parent educator and has been so for 20-plus years, said to me this past week, this is one of the most effective programs and ways of teaching reading that I've ever seen. Now you all know, she has seen every trend coming and going, and for her to say that to me really says a lot. She says, I see kids learning their sounds and learning to read at a totally different pace, so I know we're on to something good, and it's been exciting to be in their classrooms. We have celebrated Patriot Day across the school, and we talk every day about what it means to be a patriot. You know, our students, many of them are too young to understand the events of 9/11, but they are absolutely at the perfect age to understand what it means to be an American, to, to understand what it means to be a patriot, and to understand how to show respect for their country veterans and our, and our troops who are currently serving. So we spent a lot of time on September 11th talking about that. I'm happy to say that I did have the highest attendance in the district. We worked really hard for that 97%, but I do want to say, I put sliding into 97% there. That is, our PTO is to thank for that, because our PTO is a wonderful parent organization who really wants to know how they can come join with us in improving our school, in improving learning. And we all know, if a student isn't at school, no learning can replace that. So they sponsored our inflatables that day, and it also helped that it was Picture Day, because parents still want those cute pictures at that age. We enjoyed Constitution Day this week. I did share a picture there of one second-grade constitution that was created. And if you'll zoom in there, Jeremy, you can see that big pen he's using, but those kids thought it was the grandest thing they'd ever done to sign that with a feather pen. So we're really trying to teach what it means to be a good student, what it means to be a good citizen, and Constitution Day is the perfect day for that. Below there, we have Accelerated Reader victories. I am so excited to let you know that within the first, what, five weeks of school, six weeks of school, our students have read over 3 million words. One thing that I love about Accelerated Reader is Ms. Rose is doing a phenomenal job celebrating victories with them. You've read 100 words, you've read 200 words. They're coming in and taking those assessments. We've got to get back to where students love to read, that they're not, you know, we, we know that we teach them to read, then they read to learn, but somewhere in the midst of all that, they've got to love to read. So Accelerated Reader is especially good for students who like that challenge of meeting milestones and opening up the library for them. It's been a wonderful treat for us this year. We have some upcoming events. I know as board members, you all hear from people constantly that they miss coming into our schools. Mr. Brock has been very supportive of us doing that the correct way and the safe way. So we have several events coming up over the course of the year, and I shared that so that you could say to those parents and grandparents, your time's coming. So we have opportunities for every grade level this year to participate in the school day with lunch. And we have had several people request chili, so it might be chili every time. We have enjoyed our second Grandparent Day Parade. We shut down the entire Main Street. I do feel like I should give Officer Freedley and Gibson a big apology for the chaos that ensued on Main Street, but thank you for humoring us. We had almost 400 cars come through Estill Springs during that parade, and it shut it down. A couple of things here on the left that I want to share is our leadership opportunities. Mr. Cornet, just this week, he provided Hunter with a badge. Hunter is a student who shows great leadership skills in keeping our school safe. We did not know that Mr. Cornet was coming with that badge, but Hunter puts it on every morning, turns it in at the office every afternoon, and he does his due diligence to keep our building safe. There is no small event or crime left unturned. So he, if you need him, he's coming to the middle school next year. We're preparing him well. Yes. He also has to take it off on the bus because he's an informant, and wearing that on the bus would not work. Yes. And last, we are so excited that we had the opportunity again to lead in the dark at the KSBA Regional Board Meeting. That was a great event. We chose some of our student leaders to come and just interact with the distinguished guests that were there. But as always, it's just an exciting time to be an engineer. I'm excited to work with my fellow coworkers here in creating a wonderful school district, and I appreciate all the support that you give us.
Thank you, Ms. Mullins. Is there anyone else that would like to share anything? Our SROs, Mr. Reese, anyone? Ms. Bryant, Ms. O'Brien? Mr. Simpson?
I just wanted to say, if you have a minute, Jennifer Williams, she is our special education coach this year at the facility, and she is doing a fantastic job of giving support to our special education staff and general education staff that work with special education teachers. And I just wanted to give her a shout out.
I agree. She's been phenomenal for, we have a young special ed staff, and she has been phenomenal with them.
What I was gonna tell you all was, back about five months ago, I applied for a COPS SVP, SVPP grant. They award this every year. You can apply every year up to half a million dollars. So I applied and won us, the, the award was for right at around $200,000. We have to cover 25% of that, but our monetary award was $150,374. And that's going to allow us to purchase 80 brand-new walkie-talkies and eight base stations for around the district, including here at Central Office. And then it's also going to allow us to buy two servers, or security cameras, total of about $100,000 for the two servers to improve recording of all of our security cameras.
Good job, Mr. Simpson. Okay, if no one has anything further, that brings us down to our board member forum. Does anyone have anything to share?
I just want to say, we had our KSBA Regional Meeting. Thank you for everything you did to get it going, and Mr. Brock and Lynette, and all of our great, wonderful food that you helped provide for all of us. It was excellent. Even though we didn't have electric, that's all right. That was ambiance, I guess.
We also received a lot of comments back from KSBA in Frankfurt, and they said they do meetings throughout the Commonwealth. They actually have several meetings every single week, and they go to all the school districts, and they said that it's always so much fun to come to Estill County, and they can tell we have a lot of pride in our district, and they really enjoy the student involvement, and they say we always have the best food, so. So, thank you all. I know everybody helped participate in that, and it takes a lot of hard work and a lot of planning, and so thank you all. Does anyone else have anything further? Mr. Joe?
I've got a quick comment. I just want to recognize our principals, those reports that you all made. I mean, it's 7 o'clock on Thursday evening, and y'all have been hitting it wide open. And you come in here, and your optimism is, is contagious. And all the talk of collaboration, and you don't find that kind of working together everywhere. And it is, it's huge, and it's really making an impact and gonna continue to make an impact. So I just wanted to recognize you all, because you're the ones holding us together.
Makes you want to rent for a brick wall right now.
We've got the best students and the best staff in the nation. I'll put them up against anybody.
Bring it on.
So thank you all for your work. Mr. Simpson, do we have any public comments? Okay, if nothing further, I'd like to call for an adjournment. I have, need a motion to adjourn, and a second to adjourn. Joe and Tammy and everybody is in agreement, so. Thank you all for coming.